Okay, everybody. Two C. Two C is the amendment.
All right.
I'm gonna ask for your indulgence and an open mind and an open heart. I didn't know I was gonna start off today, but I'm glad to be able to get this amendment day started with such an important topic. So dear councilmen and dear councilwomen.
Thank you.
Here we are again, but this time we are at a defining moment in our careers with a unique opportunity to seriously and positively change the negative conditions of Milwaukee. And I know you all know how serious this is because in 2008, this passed unanimously. And just last year, the vote was 13 to 2. I poured my heart out to y'all last year on the importance of a disparity study and what it will allow us to do to have a long-lasting impact on changing the conditions for the people who lack equal opportunity. And I was looking forward to this year's budget and getting the disparity study approved. I was looking forward to it. So we can finally get on the right track as a city. So we can complete the compromise, complete the agreement, complete the deal that we did just last year and bring hope to this city. Through the means of equal opportunity for all citizens of Milwaukee. I would like to wait for Alderman Bowe to sit down so I could finish my presentation. Bowe, please, sit down. I'm talking to you. Do you remember the last thing you heard?
Nope.
Okay. Well, I was looking forward this year to get this disparity study approved so we can finally get on the right track and bring hope to this city. This means equal opportunity for all citizens of Milwaukee. We know the disparities and the ones in the past all show that the MBE, the MBE and the WE programs are not working and the city should move towards a race-specific contracting approach. So now the budget comes this year and I keep hearing and I keep witnessing that my colleagues are not going to support the disparity study. And who will be losing is the community. I don't know what happened between last year and this year, but this is about strictly creating equal opportunity for everyone. What's wrong with that? Matter of fact, what is better than that? What happened from last year to now? The conditions of the people who need it most haven't changed. We haven't seen any progress in that area, not enough to be proud of. A colleague said last year, "When one part of the city is unhealthy, the whole part of the city is unhealthy." So yesterday, I was feeling just a little disappointed, y'all. And to add to my disappointment, the executive branch comes down to the council office at the final hour, late in the afternoon, trying to persuade my colleagues and I not to support the disparity study. So I just politely told Dennis and Oscar, "No, thank you, but I'm moving forward with the disparity study." And what I can't understand for the life of me is that there was no appointment, there was no email, there was no regard for my time and schedule for what I'm doing. Just the same old process of being sent down here to go talk to the aldermen and tell them what they should do. And I feel sorry for certain administration because they have to do that. We have exceptional talent at the city. And I look in their eyes and I can tell that they know what's right. And when I talk to them, they have great ideas, but something is holding them back. They have a job to keep, that's what it is, and they have to do as they're told. I say, "Let them shine." You come down here and talk to us, well, you have to make an appointment. And you can't come at the last hour. I've been available the entire year. Everybody knew this was coming. And if you're against this executive branch, if you want to talk about this, let's talk about it professionally. Don't, and I'm talking to the mayor. The mayor needs to come talk to us about why he wants to vote against this on something so important. Don't send Oscar and Dennis down here to talk to me about a disparity study. You talk to me. You doubt it. I don't think they do. I don't believe they do. I know, I know how they feel, and I don't think they want to do that. So I encourage, if you have something that you want to talk about, you come down here and talk to us on the alderman side of the floor and discuss something as a professional. So I was a little frustrated about that. After all that work we did last year, after all that compromise, after we overrode the veto, absolutely no communication throughout the year, none, until late afternoon, y'all. I don't know what to think about that, but how disrespectful is that? That is extremely disrespectful. And we cannot continue to run a city like that. We cannot continue to accept that type of operation. Poor communication and no sense of urgency, no sense of energy, status quo, too much procrastination, and a lack of seriousness. And let me be clear, this is not personal. This is business. So we need to do better. But however, besides that, that's just the way it's been. But I have faith in this council. I have faith in the citizens of Milwaukee. I have faith that the people who elected us elected us to do the right thing, no matter what, and lead the city the right way. Equal opportunity for all, so everybody has the opportunity to shine. This is the best council that Milwaukee has ever had. There's no doubt about it. We have a strong South Side that does not take no mess, and we have a strong North Side that is demanding this city provide equal opportunity for all and provide adequate resources to the community. Imagine the power of a team down here with one agenda together, and that's a prosperous Milwaukee that provides equal opportunity for all. We have to run this city. It's evident. We have to run this city. We have to do what's right. And since I've been elected, the preponderance of programs, initiatives, and policy have been created and designed by the aldermen and the alderwomen. There's no doubt about that, and everybody knows that. This is our defining moment for this city, a historical moment, putting us on the right path to equal and equitable opportunity for all people. We cannot afford to wait any longer. Just picture this. Picture this. What if white people were the worst place in America for Milwaukee? Unimaginable, isn't it? Picture if Hispanics were the worst place in the world for Milwaukee, in the world, in America, in Milwaukee. Picture if Asians or Native Americans were the worst place to live in America, our city Milwaukee. I would vote for that in a heartbeat. I would vote for y'all. I wouldn't want y'all community like that. I would vote for that in a heartbeat. The fact that I have to struggle year after year to do this is not right, y'all. Community is about working together. That's what community is, working together for all in a specific locality, sharing government characteristics, common interests with a common goal. And our common goal is the best city in the world. I'm trying to make this the best city in the world. The time is now to eradicate segregation. The time is now to eradicate poverty. The time is now to eradicate unemployment. The time is now to improve the education of our children. And the time is now to provide equal opportunity for all citizens of Milwaukee. Listen, I don't want to pay a million dollars for a disparity study for something that we already know, but the U.S. Supreme Court requires it. They have required that the disparity study be conducted, and the money is to make it legally defensible to comply with the Supreme Court Richmond versus J.A. Conn's 1989 decision, which provides guidance as to how race-specific contracting can be done in a legally defensible manner. This is a small price to pay for what we can achieve as a city. George Bernard Shaw said, "Progress is impossible without change, and those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything." There is too much focus on what we cannot do, on what we will do one day, or let's just wait. It's time out for that. We have to move now. Henry Ford said, "He never wasted time on what he could not do, but only focused on what he could do." And somehow, the stuff that he could not do automatically vanished because he focused on what he could do. Let's focus on what we can do as aldermen. Stop complaining, and let's work together to get things done in this city. I'd like to conclude with this, Mr. President. And I'm gonna take a little breath because this is about my son. I had a conversation with my son, y'all. Talk Kovak a little bit about it. My son is five years old. His name is Russell Wright Stamper III. He's brilliant, just like all of our children. He loves coming to City Hall. And on his very first visit, on the way home, he asked me, he said, "Daddy, what do you do for work?" I said, "I'm an alderman." He said, "Well, Daddy, what do aldermen do?" I said, "Well, I help people. My job is to help people. It's the best thing you can do in the world." He said, "I want to be an alderman. I want to be an alderman, Daddy." You see, I ran for office to help people, and I know you did too. And the community is counting on us. And what happens when my son gets old enough and realizes that Milwaukee is the worst place for African-Americans to live? And he asked me, "Daddy, well, if it's your job to help people, why is the city where I live the worst place in America for people who look like me?" What am I gonna say? What would you say? I try? No. There is no try. You either do or you don't. That's what I teach my son. I teach my son, "You either do it with all your heart, or you don't do it at all." So I'm counting on you aldermen. I'm counting on my fellow aldermen and alderwomen to vote in support of this disparity study so we can put a policy together to change Milwaukee and personally, so my son will never have to ask me that question. I appreciate your time, and please vote in favor of the disparity study. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Wackowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I hear, this is being billed as the measure that will cure joblessness in Milwaukee. That's what I just got done hearing. It's not a study of all employment in Milwaukee. It's not a study of all employers. It's not a study of how can we produce jobs throughout the city. It's a study of what's the city Milwaukee doing? How do we contract things out? Yet, we do already have different methods in place to ensure, to the best of our ability, that we are doing equal employment for everyone here. It's assumed by doing this study that we're not doing that. That's from where I said. At the committee meeting, the department did not support it. The department also stated that you may be surprised by the results, and it might have results that you're not interested in having. When asked whether the parties that sued us before would sue us again, their response was, "That's likely," which would be these funds down the drain. A year ago, I had a resolution drafted to set up a task force on employment in Milwaukee. I didn't get it done, so I asked that it be placed on file. It just recently passed through Community and Economic Development. My hope was someone would look at that and say, "Well, if Wackowski's not gonna start a task force on this, on employment throughout Milwaukee, then I should." But it was placed on file. Nobody thought that it was important to look at jobs throughout the city of Milwaukee. And it just got, last council meeting was totally placed on file.
Oh, okay, they're totally combined.
So what are we really accomplishing here? I really don't know that this is the best that we can do to provide jobs in Milwaukee, not this measure, not this amount of money. And Alderman Stamper's right. Over a year ago, I said that if a part of the city is not healthy, the city's not healthy. I stand by those remarks, and it's true. But my question, is this the best use of limited resources? And I frankly don't think that it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Stamper.
Thank you, Mr. President. It absolutely is the best use of resources. We have an opportunity to change, opportunity for people. We're talking about a whole section of this city that is not being, that is not being provided fairly contracting opportunity. Alderman Wackowski, I just told you that we are the worst in the city and the country. This is a tool to get us out of that situation. I'm asking for your help to give contracting entrepreneur opportunities to the people who need it the most. A million dollars for a study, the U.S. Supreme Court said we had to do it. Therefore, we can get a program that allows the city, Milwaukee, to offer everybody an opportunity to succeed. If your district is not perfect, that's a contract. That's how I'm doing in my district. We need lots, let's do a lot contract entrepreneurship. We need the snow shovel, let's do a snow contract entrepreneurship. MMSD, Water Department, millions of dollars available for contracting. Let's open it up for everybody and ensure the opportunity is there. We are doing what we can, but it's nowhere near enough. Now, where's your task force? I'll vote for it right now. Let's do immediate adoption on your task force to help our unemployment. Let's do it right now. I would like for us to work together on this need. You have to understand the conditions of this city. This is not a nine-to-five. This is an all-day, every-day issue. And you can't get nothing done down here unless you have the support of your colleagues. And that's a little difficult for my community to understand, but I'm gonna keep explaining it to them, and I'm gonna keep coming down here with this disparity study, and I'm gonna keep providing opportunities for my community, for our community. Please vote for this, Alderman Wackowski. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Kovak.
Thank you, Mr. President. A question for the sponsor. It is true that I had extensive talks with the sponsor and did just try to encourage him to find sources of revenue other than borrowing for this. And it appears he has, but I just wanted to know, it says eliminating a traffic control engineer. I wanted to know what that position was or why we think we don't need it. I'm certainly open to it.
Alderman Stamper, did you have it?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Alderman Kovak. And I'm gonna give this credit to my colleague, Alderman Zalinski. So I'm gonna ask Alderman Zalinski to respond because I trusted him in giving me this opportunity. Thank you, Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you, Alderman. Basically, Traffic Engineer III is money that is gonna be replenished with the Potawatomi money that was dedicated exclusively to the streetcar. That was the latest position that I found, first found, anyway, that's the latest position that I found that's gonna be replenished with the Potawatomi money. So that's where it's coming from.
Why are we eliminating the, we're eliminating Position Authority as well?
What I told Alderman Stamper is that I spoke with the Department of Public Works to corroborate what we found, and we found that that position, Traffic Engineer III, is gonna be dedicated to the streetcar, and it will be refunded with Potawatomi money. That's the only thing, you know, that I told them.
Well, I just wanted to be clear then that we're not eliminating Position Authority, which is how I'm reading it, because in that case, then we'd have money that we can't spend if we eliminate Position Authority.
Right, exactly. Well, then that, what I told him is what I told you. There must have been some sort of communication mishap between him and the staff, but to answer your, then you might need to amend that then. But that's where the money's coming from. By the way, yeah.
I don't know if the appropriate motion, I don't want to make the motion. I'll let the sponsor decide, but given the uncertainty around this, I would like to at least hold it to get more information from Department of Public Works on this.
All right, we just got word that it does not eliminate the Position Authority of the funding.
Has the, has the Department of Public Works, I just want confirmation of that. We don't need to go into committee the whole, but...
I was, Mr. John Ledvina was in the room with me. We sent a follow-up email to corroborate our conversation. I believe the city clerk was CC'd on that email, so if the city clerk would like to corroborate that, I would ask him to do so, Mr. President.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go through all of that. He just told me, he got the word from budget and LRB that that is the case. I wouldn't tell you anything different.
So the position is not eliminated?
The funding is, though.
Okay, and are we sure that Potawatomi can cover it? Because I know, I know we've kind of been spending that money a few different ways, and I don't know, was that always the intent?
Mr. President? Alderman Zalinski, to that specific?
I'll defer to the city clerk, anybody that has firm confirmation, but I've been checking very diligently on the Potawatomi money, and I'm not aware of any contract that's been signed or anything like that, but, you know, I'd like to defer to...
All right, so what they're doing now is getting that confirmation. I don't think they were expecting for that specific question, so they are going through that right now. So in the meantime, we're gonna go to Alderman Stamper.
Thank you. There was two other points that I meant to address regarding Alderman Wackowski's comments. Alderman Wackowski, it's not a study that will provide a cure, okay? It's a study that will allow us to correct what we already know. The firms we are using haven't lost. They have to start somewhere and can't keep up with the status quo. I can't keep with the status quo, excuse me. We have to get off this status quo because it's not getting us nowhere. And if we get sued, shame on them. That's what the million dollars is for, to make it legally defensible. Many other cities are succeeding with a disparity study. They paid between $1 and $1.5 million. And they withstood all lawsuits, and they're undefeated. We're gonna RFP it out to them. I would like to see the city attorney, Grant Longley, take on this battle and see some type of strength. He's been here 33 years. Let's put him to work with this, a historical lawsuit, if somebody decides the lawsuit. Let's see him go to where he's been 33 years. It's time for him to defend the city of Milwaukee. And we're gonna have a million-dollar study to be able to prove and fight the reason why we need a race-specific, race-conscious program. I know nobody agrees that it's acceptable to get sued left and right like we do with all other, with the majority of the police department, but that just comes across, bam, I think I got a report, about 20-some million. We just did, we just approved another $2 million. Stamp, $2 million, 20 million, nothing. This community is requesting a million-dollar study so we are able to defend why we have a race-conscious program in the city that is the worst place for African-Americans. And all it would do is make equal opportunity for everyone, so everyone can shine. It'll force us to work together, which we need to be doing anyway. All races need to be working together, work together for contracts, start a whole new paradigm of contracting. Friendly, in a business manner, contracting with the city that gave them the opportunity. And we are the aldermen that have done that or will do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Alderman. Were there, Chair recognizes Alderman Wackowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. The passion of Alderman Stamper is off the charts, and since day one, he's been about jobs. And I, I don't want to have that message lost, but I have to tell you that I am very, very nervous when we start talking about a contract with Potawatomi that had a ton of fanfare in the media, okay? And yet, to my knowledge, nobody has seen... And yet, to my knowledge, nobody has seen this contract. And we're now making suppositions, and we're making decisions, we're making, I don't know, on something that we haven't seen on a wing and a prayer? I think that's kind of gross, irresponsible. And quite frankly, Mr. President, I think that before we, we proceed, we should have some kind of, of commentary from the city attorney's office to say, "How can you spend money that you don't necessarily have, or how can you spend it that way?" I mean, I, I'm just envisioning being at a town hall meeting and facing my constituents and saying, "So, did you see the contract? Uh, no? So why did you vote for it? Well, because we were told." Honestly, people, I, I, as elementary as this may seem, I think we need to have that answered first, before we do anything today. Can we vote on something that we, none of us have seen? And we're gonna just, we're gonna say, we're gonna allocate monies that we don't, we think we have? I mean, then this budget might be a sham. So I'm sorry, but we might have to go back to square one here and talk about this contract.
Right, just, just, just so that there's an understanding, that these resources are not recognized in the budget, so we cannot make decisions based off of those resources. If you do, it's, it's off of the idea of it, it is not recognized, and our budget is not recognized by the comptroller, so we're not making decisions based off of the idea that they would come. So we, so...
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. President, okay. That, logically, that sounds, sounds fine, okay? But anytime any of us use the term Potawatomi money, okay? Then we're back to that same first step, all right? And so, we all know that the term Potawatomi money is gonna be used the rest of this day today. That's why I'm nervous.
Point taken, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Baumann.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I do have a possible solution to this problem. I am gonna offer a loose amendment later in the day, which will free up, I believe, $101,000 in tax levy dollars. That amendment will reduce the compensation of the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals in half, which will save about $26,000, and also reduce the planning fund in Department of City Development by $75,000, because it appears that the Board of Zoning Appeals no longer, no longer feels bound by our comprehensive plans in making decisions on special uses and variances. So what's the point of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans that are basically, have no legal effect anymore? So that's a possible solution, and I just throw that out there for Alderman Stamper's consideration, and that would perhaps alleviate this issue of eliminating a position in the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Alderman Baumann. We consider, Chair recognizes Alderman Bow.
Thank you, Mr. President. My, my years of experience, and I appreciate the, the recent comments made from my colleague on the fourth, is when you rely on other uncertain votes, you create a dustier trail that you can't see through. I, I just think that that's complicating the matter even further. I wanna, I wanna offer another version of this that I think cleans up the issue that's been raised about this so-called Potawatomi money. It would rely on the Alderman 15th who would draw his motion. And the, the version that I would offer, if that were to be the case, simplifies this matter, it goes back to the original, and the original that was passed through committee merely looks at converting capital for software and freeing up levy funds that would fund a disparity study. But it also attempts to address another, I think, important issue for this community, and that is, it would also increase the personnel cost adjustment. Now, I didn't confirm this, but I had saw it by, by 1%. I know that most of the departments were at 2, and come up with freed-up monies to actually add five additional sworn police officers to the, the last class in 2018. To me, this is attempting to deal with two very valid issues in this community. The, the very passion that Alderman Stamper is conveying here, I think, is a very valid one. I further, I, I, you know what, Mr. President? I would like to speak just ever so slightly more on this, if it's available, but I know that the call will be his on whether to do that. I don't want to speak further on a proposal that isn't before us, but I, I appreciate the, the passion in which he brings this measure before us. What I will say is, this council voted 13 to 2 last year for that disparity study. 13 to 2. It got us halfway. There are no, if, if you felt that that had any validity for advancing and moving this community forward, then we shouldn't delay. We shouldn't delay, because there's gonna be tougher budgets in the future. Next year's gonna be, we're already hearing worse. And if you can't, why set aside money with a vote if you're not prepared to take it through? Tough or not. I grow, I get really tired of reading on social media studies that are coming out saying that Milwaukee is one of the five worst cities for African-Americans in the country. I get tired, Mr. President, of hearing from young, talented, educated African-Americans, one after another, feeling that they have to go to Atlanta or other communities to make success. We will not thrive totally. We'll have elements here and elements there, but we will not thrive totally as a community until we are moving forward together as one. And that's why I support moving this forward. But I also believe that if we're going to address one need, that we should attempt to address two vital needs. And that's why I'm rearing and ready to go if, if, given the opportunity to present 2B before us. Thank you.
All right, based on those comments, Alderman Stamper, I want to hear from you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to show my appreciation for Alderman Bow. Appreciate for, I appreciate his thoughtfulness, and I appreciate him putting together this amendment. And I'm gonna support it in the interest of doing whatever I can for my community, for our community. Whatever we can. So yes, I'm gonna present this amendment with a partnership with my colleague, Alderman Bow. And thank you very much, Alderman Bow.
So that's an official withdrawal of Amendment 2C.
2, and just to be clear, still, it's $500,000 to go to the $500,000 for our disparity study, so we can get a race-conscious program, so we can provide equal opportunity for this city. In addition, it adds five police officers to this city to help out with the attrition that we are having to deal with. I appreciate that. Alderman Wacowski and Alderman Zalinski, I hope you support it, based on that. Thank you very much. And Alderman Donovan?
All right, Chair recognizes Alderman Bow.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm gonna try to be as brief as I can. I encourage members to support 2B. I think, while, while I'm gonna be honest in saying a disparity study is not gonna address all which ills segments of this community, we need to take one step forward, one after another. We're not gonna reach 1,000 miles unless we start taking steps now. I also think the other obvious thing is, we, we know and are very cognizant of the fact that this budget presents us with a reduction of 33 sworn police officers. We know that we are also at risk with a high number of detachments, because we're at the 25-year window of the original cops grants, where there was a massive infusion. And as, as was presented to the budget office at the table by the chief himself, that the department is seeing officers not extend in wait for 26, 27, 28, or 30 years anymore, that many, an increasing number of officers are opting out for retirement at 25. We face huge numbers in terms of existing detachments, and I think that if we are able to actually move a step forward for two important issues for this community, both safety and also the issue of, of providing opportunity across the board to all of our citizens, I think that this is a measure that is a win-win. So I would encourage my colleagues to support this. I, I think that this is a means of addressing two of the, the bigger issues that we're facing here before this body today, and I would ask for member support of 2B. Thank you.
All right, Item 2C is withdrawn. Item 2B is before us. Are there any other questions or comments relating to Item 2B? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I know this is a challenging debate for us to be having in this moment, I will say, the level of collaboration beyond geographic lines, district-wise, that we just have witnessed take place on this floor today, I think is an example of the collaborative work and effort that has to happen, so that we can continue to build Milwaukee that we all can be proud of, where no segment of this city is on the, on anyone's list nationally, for the worst to raise our children, worse for education, and worse to live. I've heard over the last several weeks, as we've gone through this budget process, a lot of what I equate to fear, as it relates to the disparity study. Fear of being sued, fear of outcomes not being what one anticipates them to be, and fear of not making the right decision. And fear is defined as an unpleasant emotion caused by the belief that someone or something is dangerous, likely to cause pain or threat. But it's kind of funny, because I believe that each of the 15 of us got here to sit in these seats on this council floor because we overcame fears. Fears of losing, fears of not getting all the support you thought you needed, fear of not raising enough money, not getting enough votes, fear of not impressing the right people, fear of not doing what your parents or others thought you should be doing with your life. But we all overcame those fears to get here, so we are not strangers to facing fears head-on and overcoming them. I would also argue that my greater fear is not a lawsuit. It's what will happen to this city and the people we represent when we don't equip ourselves with as many of the tools possible to help to change the conditions that people now are in. And while we all know the disparity study alone is not the salvation of this city, or Black people for that matter, we should all recognize that the tools we currently have are not enough. And for those who may not believe that the disparity study is a tool we should have, beyond this vote today, beyond this debate today, I would encourage them and anybody else to continue to create all the other tools that whether this passes or not, we desperately need. Because I know I'm tired of representing an area where there are more homes with green boards on them than there are with families living in them. I know I'm tired of going to the drive-through restaurants, and it's tons of people standing at the drive-through asking for change. I know I'm tired of all of the economic disparity that I see in portions of the community that I represent. And we each come here every day to fight for different legislation, to help change those conditions, fight for more inclusion in our workforce, fight for stuff with development projects, fight for all these opportunities. And this is just another piece of that fight. And I think in this fight, we gotta have a little courage. Courage being defined as the ability to do something that frightens one. So if you got a little fear of the lawsuits and what people might think, that's all right, that's healthy. But you gotta have the courage to face that fear, so that we can change conditions in this city. Just two nights ago, my husband showed me a recent national article in a national publication that lists the top worst cities in the nation for Black people to live in. And of course, Milwaukee was on that list. I don't know about everybody else, but I no longer want to be on those lists, and I no longer want to be living in and representing people that have to live in the reality of what those lists show the world. It's becoming almost like a political stump speech to talk about the zip codes that we represent, or the bad conditions for Black people. But it's more than a list, it's more than a speech, it's more than a movie, it's more than something people just say on hard times. It's people's lives, that we have the ability to at least attempt to help change, improve, and alter. And we have to have the courage to do that. And without great risk, there is no great reward. And given the level of poverty and disparity that exists in this city, it's time for us to take whatever risk we must and exhibit all the courage we can to help make sure that we are building a Milwaukee that all of our children can be proud of. I am supporting this amendment, and I would hope that my colleagues do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Chair recognizes Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd first like to commend Alderman Russell Stamper for his tenacity. I think it's important that we have people who truly, genuinely, sincerely care about the progress of the people in the city of Milwaukee. I think he reflects that. I want to commend Alderman Bow, I want to commend Alderwoman Cox for being the conscious of this body right here today, this morning. Now, I read that, uh, that article too, it was in the USA Today, dated November 7th. It becomes so repetitive, I begin to look and say, "Is this an old article?", but it's actually a very recent article. It says that Milwaukee, the Black median income is 42.2% of white income, the white unemployment is 3.3%, the Black unemployment is 12.4%. Sad to say that Racine, Wisconsin, has joined that list as well, so this thing is becoming not only a Milwaukee issue, but it's a Wisconsin issue. Not only is it a local issue, but truly, it's the issue of our time. How does it feel for us to exist in a moment where we can say, "We actually reside and live in a city that's the worst place for a Black man, woman, or child to live"? And I truly, I don't understand the opposition. I don't understand the opposition. I mean, the deferred maintenance on the quality of life of Black people here in this city has gone on for several decades now. I'm proud to serve with some people here in this body that had the courage, as Alderwoman Cox said, to step up and do something different. Same rigor mode as Alderwoman Cox. Same rigor mode as Alderman Stamper said, the status quo, it's not getting us nowhere. I think what we have to understand is that we in this together. We all live within the city of Milwaukee. When they say this distinction is on the city of Milwaukee, it's on the state of Wisconsin, it's on all of us, every last one of us. And do I think a disparity study will be the magic bullet to solve all of our problems? I don't. Do I think an Office of African-American Affairs will solve all our problems? I don't. But do I think continuing to do nothing, to sit on our hands and do nothing? I mean, perhaps, no, I won't benefit from this, perhaps Alderman Stamper, Alderman Cox, we won't benefit from the study, but perhaps our daughter will, perhaps our children will, perhaps the next generation will. So with that said, I just want to commend, I mean, it's why I wanted to come to the common council. I wanted to come serve with some people who had the willingness to be bold and make a change, and I appreciate that. And with that said, I would ask for unanimous consent to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman.